I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 26, 2024, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome board members, welcome members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hellman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. We do have some additional detail to accompany the item five C, the potential 2024 Northfield High School Bond Referendum update. There's some additional spreadsheet information. We also have a number of items in the consent agenda, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignments, a leave of absence, and some retirements and resignations. That is the table file for this evening.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? My coin. All those in favor say aye. Host. Motion passes. Item three, um, do we have any public comment? Okay, so that is item three is our public comment section. Um, item four is announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hellman, do we have any?
We, we have several this evening. Uh, first, uh, we want to notify, uh, community members that the hand-in-hand preschool, early ventures, learning center, and the early childhood family education programs will hold an open house and summer or fall registration night coming up on Thursday, March 7th at the Northfield Community Resource Center from 5:45 PM to 6:45 PM. And families can tour the building, see classrooms and meet staff. I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be at the Northfield Community Education Center. So Thursday, March 7th at the NCEC, um, they can tour the building. Uh, really exciting news out of the hockey world yesterday afternoon. Thrilled to hear that, uh, Northfield High School's own Ayla Puppy has won the prestigious Ms. Hockey Awards. That's the award for the best, uh, women's hockey player in Minnesota State High School League Hockey. So Ayla Puppy has won the 2024 Ms. Hockey Award, a senior forward and captain this season. She is the first Raider ever to win the state's top hockey award. She led the state in goals with 61, assists with 50, and total points with 111 this season. Ayla is a dominant player that can change a game in an instant, and anyone who followed the Raider Girls Hockey Team this year knows that. Uh, Ayla will graduate from Northfield High School this spring and will attend the University of Minnesota, where she'll continue playing women's hockey for the Golden Gopher squad. So we're excited to see her at Ritter Arena in years to come. We also want to congratulate Kaylee Graber, another really, uh, big first for Northfield High School and across the state. Kaylee is only the third girl in Minnesota high school wrestling history to qualify for the boys' state wrestling tournament. And she's the first ever female champion in boys' wrestling from section one. She's currently ranked number 11 in the nation at 105 pounds. So congratulations to Kaylee, just, uh, an excellent, uh, performance last weekend at the section wrestling tournament, winning and advancing the state. We also have several other activity-related announcements. So, uh, just let's just keep the state, uh, qualifications rolling here because swim and dive. Boys swim and dive qualified for state. They will swim in the preliminaries on Friday and hope to place many of our swimmers into the finals on Saturday at the Aquatic Center at the University of Minnesota. Uh, last year, or excuse me, this year, they had a second place finish at the True Team Meet. It's a Coach's Association Meet different point system. So they have high hopes going into the state competition. Um, also, as we mentioned before, Kaylee Graber, uh, qualified for state in wrestling, but, uh, she had six other teammates who will be joining her. Kayden Staub, Keith Harner, Owen Murphy, Ryan Kuiper, Noah Ackerman, and Laney Houts will wrestle in the individual competition, uh, this Friday morning and hopefully into the Saturday championships. It's at the Excel Energy Center in St. Paul. And finally, we want to congratulate the Northfield High School Mock Trial Team. This group composed of Grace Van Vorst, Mason Vatter, Connor Percy, Maddie Busman, Haley Parrish, Savannah Melis, Jack Linder, Ally Matthews, Piper Artley, Lynn Sinikak, Noah Meroll have all been dominant this season. And their advisor, uh, Mr. Stephen Cade has mentioned that the group is driven and is enjoying all that they can while they prepare for the mock trial state tournament that is March 7th and 8th in St. Paul. So to say that we are having a pretty amazing winter activities, uh, season is an understatement. So congratulate to all those Raider athletes and future jurists. Those are our announcements for tonight.
Super, very cool. Thanks for sharing that. Okay, item five is our items for discussion and reports. And at first up, we have at Morris Leatherman Telephone Survey Results presented by Dr. Don Liftow. Um, he will present the results of the Northfield High School Facility Telephone Survey. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Happy to be back in Northfield again and, um, looking forward to talking about the results of your most recent survey. So the introductory slide, uh, just gives you a little bit of the background of what, what we did and some of the parameters um, and specifications. Uh, once again, the survey included random sample interviews with 400 registered voters living within the boundaries of the school district. They were conducted in mid-January, and there were 34 questions with an average time on the phone of 10 minutes. Uh, to put that in some context, uh, 10 to 13 minutes or so is the range that we typically strive for with these types of surveys. Uh, not wanting to keep folks on the phone too long, uh, which results oftentimes in people not finishing the, uh, survey questionnaire. The margin of error for this particular study was plus minus, uh, 4.8%. Uh, so an easy way to think about that, if I am on a slide and tell you that 50% of the people said the sky was blue, if you add 5% to that and subtract 5%, there's a 95% chance that the opinions of everyone in Northfield fall within that range. The interview process did include demographic targets, and a, a demographic target is when we use the databases that we obtain in preparation for doing the survey, and we count different demographic groups. Uh, how many men are there? How many women? How many 18 to 24-year-olds? How many live in this ward versus a different place within the, the school district? And then we select, uh, targets based on that counting. And the purpose of doing that is those 400 people that were interviewed, uh, for this particular study, we want the demographics of that group to very closely mirror the demographics of all registered voters, uh, living within the school district. And when you can accomplish that, the, uh, data, uh, is more reliable and more trustworthy than when you don't do that. The extent to which a particular demographic dimension was, was under or over sampled, there may have been small, uh, adjustments, uh, in the data to bring them back to where they should have been, but in your case, uh, all of them were, uh, very, very close. Here are the five targets, uh, that were established. So again, with each of the, uh, targets that you see under that first bullet, the, uh, people we talked to, the 400, uh, mirrored the demographics of everybody, uh, within those five dimensions. We do keep track of cell phones and homeownership, uh, but they were not demographic targets. The survey itself focused primarily on plans related to, uh, Northfield High School and improvements that were identified, uh, as, uh, important, um, improvements in, in the high school in the future. Participants were asked their opinion about each one, uh, as they went through the, uh, different, uh, potential projects. So this is how it started, uh, in terms of the focus on the high school. Um, I, I won't read this to you, but you can kind of scan it as I'm talking. It's talking a little bit about, uh, key, uh, areas at, at the high school that were identified as needed improvements. Accessibility, HVAC, lighting as examples. It also talked about classrooms, labs, music and shop spaces. Uh, so it's giving a general background on the scope of the potential projects that are being considered, and then asking people, based on what you know now, uh, what do you think? And in that probe, the now part of it is kind of important because all they've heard so far is what you've read on the screen as I was talking. Uh, gives them a little bit of background, but not a heck of a lot. And the initial response from folks, uh, was 66% support, 22% opposition. This is very close to, uh, the results from back in September of 2022. Uh, at that time, the support level was between 62 and 63%. Uh, as you look at this data and other data that I'll be going through with you tonight, uh, when you do, the survey does make a difference. Uh, in this particular case, uh, the tracking survey was, was done in January of, uh, 2023, and the, uh, consumer price index, uh, was more favorable. Uh, interest rates were lower, inflation rates were lower. Uh, so it's not surprising that, uh, overall, the, uh, results were similar or tending to be a little bit better than they were, uh, back in September. After we got the initial, uh, reaction to that, uh, statement that we, you saw on the last slide, uh, people were told that, uh, we're going to provide you with 21, uh, examples of potential needs and projects uh, that are being considered. And for each one of them, respondents were asked to tell us if knowing that would make them much more likely, uh, somewhat more likely, uh, or less likely to, to be supportive. The order of these 21, uh, were randomized, uh, so that we didn't end up with the same thing always on the first thing that people heard or the same thing always the last thing that people heard. I'm going to read you some statements about potential high school facility projects and upgrades for each of these. Tell me if knowing that would make you much more likely, uh, likely, less likely, or, or much less likely to be supportive. So I think we've got four slides that look similar to this one. Um, I'm not going to go specifically through each one of these, uh, but I'm going to start with the one that's at the top, question 23, uh, just to make sure you know what you're looking at and know how to interpret what you're looking at. So question 23 talked about, uh, projects that would be in, uh, designed to improve the safety and security systems of the school. Uh, so that 79% that you're seeing, uh, in the orange section, uh, is adding up the percentage of people who said, if I knew that that's how the money was going to be used, I would be much more likely or somewhat more likely. So it's adding up the two, uh, positive reactions to that statement. To the right of that, you see 17% in that kind of off-green color. That's adding up the two negative reactions. Knowing that would make me less likely or much less likely to be supportive. And then way over on the right is the percentage who said, uh, no difference or an undecided kind of response. So as you can see on this slide, the, the positive reactions are ranging from 69 to 79% of the negative reactions from 17 to 23%. Now, these next slides are going to look just like this one, and so you're seeing examples of the kinds of questions that were put before, uh, respondents to get their reaction and to, um, to see to what extent knowing that would make them more or less likely to be supportive. So on this slide, you're seeing that the positive ranging from 65 to 69% uh, and the negative, uh, ranging from 23 up to 26%. Here's the third slide of, of similar data. Remember, we're going through the 21 examples of potential improvement projects that are being considered. Here you're seeing support levels between 59 and 64, and opposition, uh, ranging up to a high of 33%. Again, the third percentage over on the right is, is the undecided, uh, making no difference reaction. So now we've gone through the 21, uh, examples of potential projects. So now we're coming back and saying, okay, uh, now that you've heard additional information about, uh, this potential project, uh, tell me again, what do you think? So we're coming back, uh, for a second, uh, response. This is oftentimes, uh, called, um, a seasoned response or an educated response because now I've heard 21 examples of what, what it is we're thinking about doing. And so we're coming back, and that's where you're seeing that 68.7%. Uh, now, the good news is the information we provided made the support level go up. Uh, but getting back to that margin of error from a statistical point of view, even though those look different to you, they are statistically within the margin of error. So you really can't say that, uh, anything changed. Now, in terms of how, uh, Northfield, uh, responded compared to what we typically see, uh, it's not unusual that the, uh, support level increase is less than the margin of error, particularly when you start off, uh, at about two-thirds support. There just isn't anywhere to go really as compared to, let's say you started off with 50% support, then you might end up seeing a little larger increase, uh, after people got information. You see a note on the bottom that the September 2022 survey, the, uh, was 62 and a half percent initially, and after information, it went to 67.3, very close to what you ended up here, but again, within the margin of error. Uh, so it's statistically not, uh, an increase last time either. Now, the next section of the, uh, summary is looking at the, uh, eight, uh, demographic characteristics that you see here. Six of the eight were controlled, the, uh, the others were not. And so what we're looking at is how did people respond, uh, after they got information? Now, no one's heard anything about potential tax increases yet. So it's just after they received information. And so you've got the parent support over on the left. That's one or more children attending the Northfield Schools now. Um, in the middle, it's folks who said, I've never had anybody, uh, attending a Northfield School. Now, that could be, uh, someone my age that moved into Northfield recently, uh, or it could be a, a young family with, uh, either no children or children, uh, younger than kindergarten age. And then on the right is an alumni parent. Uh, those are people who told us, I don't have anybody in the district now. Uh, I used to have kids in the district. Uh, the profile that you have here, uh, is, um, pretty common. Uh, I, I don't know if I've ever seen parent support lower than, uh, non-parent and alumni parent. Uh, we typically like to see, you know, uh, 15, 20% uh, higher, which you have in your, in your particular case. Uh, there's some deviation with the alumni parent. Uh, uh, sometimes, you know, you'll see the alumni parent actually coming in about the same as non-parent or slightly less than non-parent. Uh, but, um, yours is a very common, common profile. On the left, we're, we're looking at support based on, uh, gender, male, female. Uh, you ended up with a female just slightly less, uh, supportive than males. Uh, if you look back at 2022, um, it was the same profile then with females slightly less, uh, supportive than males. Uh, that's a, a little bit unusual. Uh, we typically see females, uh, 3 to 5% uh, more supportive than males. On the right hand of this slide, you're looking at support based on, uh, age, and you're seeing a very common profile, uh, where your strongest support is coming from the age range where most of your parents, uh, currently reside. On the left, we're looking at support based on where do I live within the boundaries of the school district. Uh, it's pretty flat, uh, on the left side, not a, not a big variation by ward. And I look back at 2022, and, uh, Ward Three was a little bit higher than the rest, uh, in September of 2022, uh, as well. On the right, you're seeing support based on past voting activity. Uh, so what we did with this is we, uh, we obtained a database that included, uh, voting, um, habits over time. And, uh, we divided them up so that in the, uh, blue on this particular slide, uh, that represents people who have voted in zero to two out of the last nine times where they could have voted. I know this might have been a presidential, might have been a governor, might have been a school board, whatever the last nine were. So it's zero to two out of nine on the left, uh, three to five out of nine in the middle, uh, and, uh, at least six or more out of nine, uh, on the right in the green color. On this slide, on the left, you're seeing support, uh, based on household income. Uh, this was a, uh, information that we, uh, got from the database that we purchased to do the project. People were not asked, uh, how much they made on the phone because that tends to be a, a pretty unpopular question, uh, for people to respond to. Um, as you can see, they're, uh, relatively, uh, flat with the exception of the, the two, uh, on the left, under 25 and 25 to 50. Uh, there is no normal pattern for this. Uh, we see a lot of variation, uh, and yours is relatively, uh, flat with the exception of the two on the left. On the right, you're seeing support based on educational attainment. This is also, uh, a, a database that we, uh, purchased rather than asking that particular question during the, during the interview. Um, high school on the left, some college, bachelor's degree, and graduate level degree. And this is homeowner and renter. Um, the most common profile that we see, uh, in surveys is, uh, renters, uh, typically being 3 to 6 or 7% higher in support, uh, than, um, homeowners. Uh, because, uh, as, as is the case with my wife and me, who, uh, seven years ago went from homeowner to renter, you don't connect the, uh, renting and property taxes in the same way, uh, as you do when you own your home. Now, the third benchmark, uh, takes everything we've done so far and is putting it in the, in the context of, uh, cost. And in this particular case, uh, we found out from the county that we should use $350,000 for, uh, average-priced home. Uh, back in 2022, uh, we used 300. And we're giving, uh, respondents, um, potential tax increases both, uh, monthly and annually. So they hear them both, uh, each time they hear one of the tax, uh, impact possibilities. In this particular study, we used 240, 360, 480, and 600. And again, uh, when they were presented, they were presented both the annual and the monthly. And these will also were done in random order. So if I had, uh, called your home for this particular study, you might have heard, uh, 4, 480 first, uh, you might have heard 360 second, someone else might have heard 600 first. Uh, they're randomized to avoid, uh, having them have a sense that you're taking me up the ladder or down the ladder and having that affect how I respond. The tax impacts we used were significantly higher than, uh, the ones that were used in September of 2022. So this is what it looks like to begin with. Uh, as you might imagine, uh, the line always starts higher and goes down, moving left to right. Um, and in this particular case, I, you ended up with the 240 figure, um, well above, uh, the margin of error at 50% plus margin. Uh, with that 360, if you, if you add four and a half and subtract four and a half to that 47, you're either going to be just getting over the hump or being a little bit short. Um, uh, and then the other two are well below the, uh, 50% plus one needed for success. Now, this is taking the same information on the previous slide, uh, and just dividing it up and giving you another look at it. So in, in this particular case, the blue is your very active voters. Remember, those were the ones that were, uh, voted at at least six times out of the last nine. Uh, the red or burnt orange are the people who are getting there about half the time. And the, uh, green are the ones that are two or fewer times out of nine. Uh, and so, as you can see, the, uh, the group that was most likely to vote in this particular case also were a little bit more supportive, uh, at two of the four and then, and kind of right on top of each other with the other two. This, uh, sometimes becomes important depending on, uh, what date the district is considering for, for your potential referendum. The, the group that doesn't vote very often, that zero to two out of nine, a lot more of them get there in a, in a November 2024 than they would, uh, in another time during the year. The, uh, last section of the survey, um, looked at a, a few qualitative indicators, um, to, uh, either test or retest some things that we'd looked at back in September. Uh, the grading in the district is one that we've used hundreds of times. Uh, it's, uh, uh, a probe used by Fidel de Capa. Um, Morris Leatherman has permission to use it in our studies as well. And it's one way to get kind of a read on what, what people are thinking. Uh, students are often given the grades of A, B, C, D, and F. Uh, thinking about Northfield, what grade, uh, would you assign? And here's the result of that particular probe. Uh, the 30% is A. Uh, the burnt orange at 47% is B, and the 15% is C. As you can see, the other three are, uh, very, very small, uh, response rates. To give you comparisons, we can look both at, uh, past surveys done here, uh, as past surveys done here uh, as well as the Phi Delta Kappa survey. And the Phi Delta Kappa survey is apples to apples. Uh, it's, it's exactly the same question. Uh, and so it's, it's a good uh, indication of how you compare to the national response as well. So this is what that looks like. Uh, what you're seeing here in the graph, the Northfield results uh, most recently from the two thousand twenty-three survey are in blue. And the Northfield from September of last year are in orange. And then the Phi Delta Kappa uh, National Survey, same question uh, is in that, that green. Combined As and Bs and the current survey came in at seventy-eight percent, eighty-three percent in two thousand twenty-two. There was a follow-up question uh, asking people, oops. There we go. Asking people why they gave the grade they gave. Uh, and these are depicted on this, this circle graph. If you start with uh, something about financial management, that's in the blue, the ten percent. And then as you move around the circle uh, clockwise, you're going down the list. It's to the right of the circle. So the leadership and management is uh, orange, fourteen percent academic standards and that uh, light green at nine academic standards in the thirty-four percent quality of instruction and the twenty-six percent. Uh, we did uh, test a second time um, a, a probe that we use to help us measure tax climate. Uh, and in this particular case, the, the probe is, I would never vote for a tax increase no matter what the amount or how the money raised would be used. And we're looking to see what percentage of respondents agree with that statement. And remember, the statement is in the negative. I would not vote for any tax increase of any amount for any purpose. And you ended up at sixteen percent agreeing with that statement. Um, the uh, one we did back in September, I believe you were at twenty-six percent if I recall. So this was a little better. Uh, but remember in my introductory remark, I also commented that the, the middle of January uh, was also a pretty good time for the stock market, pretty good time for uh, Consumer Price Index and lots of indicators that people look at to kind of uh, measure to what extent they're feeling uh, positive about the economy. The rest of the slides are, are going through and providing you with some uh, summary uh, data and numbers of what I've uh, already presented. The, the initial uh, support level, the very first question uh, was at sixty-six point two percent. Uh, in September of two oh two-two, it was at sixty-two point five. Uh, better than last time, but with, within the margin of error. The informed support is after people heard the twenty-one examples of the types of projects that are being considered uh, for a potential future uh, bond referendum. And so after hearing all of those, the support moved to sixty-eight point seven, very close to what it was in September at sixty-seven point three. That improvement is the way you want it to go, uh, but it's within the margin of error, so not statistically significant. In terms of those twenty-one uh, potential projects that were reviewed, uh, the greatest positive impacts were from safety and security, special education and uh, uh, accessibility improvements for disabled um, residents or students. Comparatively smaller positive impacts uh, from natural light uh, and uh, earlier athletic practices. Of those twenty-one items that were tested, positive impacts ranged from fifty-nine to seventy-nine percent. That's the percentage that said, knowing that would make me uh, somewhat more likely or much more likely to be supportive. And the negative impacts range from seventeen to thirty-three percent. Higher support levels for high school improvements uh, came from parents, uh, voters under forty-four at lower household incomes. Uh, lower support comparatively came from voters over sixty-five and from non-parents. At the time of the data collection, uh, overall support levels rise above the margin of error at fifty-four point uh, eight percent or at three hundred and fifteen dollars uh, per year. Now, that's the first line graph that you saw for the uh, tax increases. Go along that line graph, get to fifty percent, move it uh, back a little bit so that you can pick up your margin of error. And that's the number that you would end up at. That second bullet gives you a different number, uh, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, pretty close, but, but a little bit higher. And that's a little bit higher because of the strongest support that came from people most likely to show up. Um, those that had voted in six uh, or more or that three to five range. In terms of grading the district, seventy-seven percent that gave As and Bs, which is very good, very low percentage on the Ds and Fs. Much better than the national benchmark. A little lower than a two thousand twenty-two, but very, very strong nonetheless. Sixteen percent of uh, respondents said they would not support any tax increase for any reason. Uh, the normal range that we see for that uh, is fifteen to twenty-five percent. So you, you are on the, the good end or the low end of that particular range. Uh, the last thing I'll mention, since I, I was asked this last time and I had to go back and look it up. Um, the refusal rate was seven, seven percent. We, we, we'd like to have that under ten. Uh, so that the refusal rate uh, was a positive uh, indicator as well. Uh, and in this context, refusal means that I, 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 someone got on the phone and they said, no, I'm not going to do the survey. And that is uh, it. So, questions?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Lipto. Um, we've been eagerly awaiting this presentation, appreciate your summary and your uh, presentation and having the slide deck. I'm now going to invite board members to ask for any clarification questions of Dr. Lipto on the scientific survey of our community's capacity and interest in addressing the high school dilemma. Board members, um, please use this time while um, to get all of your questions answered about the survey and the survey results. You can reflect on the survey itself, um, to keep your comments on our process and your inclinations for later tonight when we openly discuss the high school dilemma. Um, additionally, I ask you to consider keeping your questions to two on the first round. And then I will come back if you have more questions so that everybody has a chance to ask something and we can do that by turns. So um, is, do any of the board members have a question, clarification, comment or reflection?
Thanks, Dr. Lipto. Very helpful and encouraging to see, you know, significant level of support in the community from that survey. I did have a question just about the distribution of the demographic data. It seemed like it was fairly uniformly distributed between, you know, groups, be that income or homeownership or, you know, as you walk through that. Does that, in your analysis and your experience, does that tell you anything or any reflections on that?
Well, the um, the demographic targets that we identified, um, essentially, a- again, what that means is that if fifty-three percent of the all registered voters in Northfield are women, we want about fifty-three percent of the interviews to be with women. And the same with the other, the other targets. Uh, there's a good deal of uh, data for, for many years uh, over time that said, that suggests that uh, when you do a good job um, setting up those targets and weighting them such that the people you interviewed, uh, their demographics uh, are very similar to the demographics of all registered voters, you have better data. And clearly, uh, we've had examples of that uh, over the years, uh, and I've, I've found that to be true.
Thank you, that's helpful. And let me ask a follow-up question, just phrase it slightly differently maybe. So there, it didn't seem like there was significant variability, and I use that word, not in a statistical sense, but just sort of generally between like income categories and homeownership in the actual level of support that was identified in the survey. It seemed to be fairly uniform, usually ranging between about sixty and high sixties, low seventy percent. Does that tell you anything when you look at the results compared to other surveys that you've done?
I, I would say generally speaking that uh, when, when that's the case, um, there's been probably a pretty good job done over an extended period of time of sharing information um, and getting uh, different groups uh, informed about what's going on. Um, my, my guess would be that uh, uh, the number of meetings that have been he- held and the tours and, and all the things that have been done to uh, try to get a broader uh, scope of, of people aware generally of what's going on, that, that Northfield has done a, a good job with that. And, and when that happens, it's more likely you're going to see the outcome that you reflected on.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else have a comment, reflection, question? Okay, um, I have a one uh, easy question for you. How old is the data you mentioned you obtained rather than asked directly on income and education level?
Um, it's, it's, the, the data uh, source that we uh, use is updated every year. So it really is uh, depends on when you, when you do your survey, what the timing is. Uh, we've even had a project that we are going to be doing in Mankato, for, for example. And w- we're waiting for the data to be updated uh, before we move forward with the project. So um, you know, typically, I would say six months or less. Um, and it just kind of depends on wh- when you get to the market.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Very nice. Um, I do have some reflections that I wanted to make on the survey and Dr. Hillman, do you have any comments you want to make?
Okay, um, so I, I just wanted to reflect with the group openly. Um, the, I, I found that the survey results show that our community hi- has a high interest in addressing the high school um, dilemma. Um, we heard that's uh, sixty-eight um, plus percent of those surveyed and representing us a sample size of our community indicating they want to see um, the high school dilemma addressed. Interesting to me also was all of the demographics, across the demographics, the wards, the townships, Dundas, Bridgewater, um, age, income, homeownership, um, all showing very high levels of support, um, fifty-five and up, even as high as eighty-three percent in, in some groups. And then um, also of interest was in the rural areas, a, a lot of support um, to address the high school. Um, and then in terms of tax capacity, as um, we heard um, support between that two hundred and forty and then over to, or as high as um, three fifteen, even three twenty-five, depending on how we um, group those, that interest level. Um, so I know that later tonight, we'll carry this conversation to the next level and have some more um, dialogue. And we will have a work session which is open to the public um, March fifth. And we um, of course, hope to have a decision on March eleventh.
Just want to thank Dr. Lipto. He's a great communicator. He helped us make sure that we polished the questions so that they are appropriate for you to be able to help move your decision-making process forward. So Don, thank you for another great service to our school. This, we appreciate it. And uh, we hoped not to have to come back to you again for this for a while.
Yes. Well, thank you very much on behalf of Morris Leatherman. I appreciate it and good luck with your planning.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda for um, items for discussion and reports is Indigenous American Indian Parent Meeting and Service Update. Dr. Hillman um, will update the board about the Indigenous Parent Advisory Committee meeting held this year. And Director, Director of Instructional Services, Hope Langston, and Indigenous Family Cultural Liaison, Sybil, will share the activities associated with improving the services to our Indigenous students and families. Welcome, Sybil and Hope.
Good evening.
We're starting? So as you all know, for, uh, we are required by the state to have a, an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. That's what the state requires us to call it. That's the terminology that's in federal law. Locally and colloquially, we talk about it as an Indigenous Parent Advisory Committee. Uh, two years ago, we really tried to amp up and add additional meetings to build culture within this demographic segment of our school district. And the legislature last year approved additional money for school districts in American Indian education. And one of the things that you're allowed to do now with that, those dollars is to hire someone to help be a liaison. And so Sybil Betzinger, who's going to be part of our presentation tonight, she has been a social worker for the district and also had been a longtime chair of our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And so we are able to bring Sybil on uh, as a family or as a cultural liaison to help us create uh, better relationships and to gain greater insight into our Indigenous community, which is, has a lot of variations uh, in terms of its tribal affiliation and its needs. We've really just seen some amazing things moving forward this year because we have a champion uh, like Sybil Hope Langston, our Director of Instructional Services is deeply involved with us as well. Uh, we will bring something back to you next month as well. Typically at this meeting, we would have asked you to, we would just presented the vote of concurrence or non-concurrence. It's an annual requirement. Uh, unfortunately, we were unable to take that at the last meeting, so we're scheduling an additional meeting. Um, but we wanted Hope and Sybil to share with you all of the work that has happened this year to support our Indigenous families. So, take it away.
All right, we are happy to be here and I'm just gonna right away give a big shout out to, to Sybil because she hit the ground running this year. Um, we meet every week and I'm continuously impressed with the work she's doing with all of our Indigenous families and um, and really moving things forward. So, thank you, Sybil. So, we do start every meeting with this, so our vision and our strategic plan. And that's every, every student, not some of our students, but every student. Sorry. Um, so tonight, we thought we'd just give you an update again because of the momentum Sybil has created um, around PD opportunities for our staff and then um, and then specifically the work that, that Sybil is doing in her role as cultural liaison. So, three big efforts this year that I want to speak to. The Urban Leadership Academy, we have three seats to that um, particular training. Um, and we will rotate who's going. Matt, Matt always goes. Um, typically, he's one of the seats because he's on that board. Uh, but we sent Sybil and Michael O'Keefe to the Megan Bang presentation. Um, and you can see that title there and they came back with great ideas, very valuable training. And then um, on February nineteenth, so last Monday, was our district PD day. We had three sessions, um, one of which was uh, the dressing debt, father-son combo. They were, they were energetic, but they, they led our two-hour session on um, uh, Indigenous populations specifically, um, yeah, culturally responsive teaching. And so groups rotate, there were three groups. We wrote it, rotated through um, locations at the high school and Spring Creek. Shout out to those schools for hosting all of us. Um, the second session was on gender diversity and that was led by Todd Savage out of UW River Falls. And those two together would, would allow teachers to earn uh, Part B of cultural competency. You may recall that last year, we shifted that cultural competen- competency training to a two-year rotation, Part A and Part B, to cover the eight elements required by the state for licensure renewal. And then the third session was a return of conscious discipline because that was so well-received last year. That was uh, paid for by our MTSS grant funding. And um, and we had And and we had almost nine hundred reflection forums submitted for all three of those trainings. And that's what we do to issue CEUs to our teachers. We're going to share a little bit more about that. So it was a successful PD day. And then coming up in February, March, and then Sybil brought this to us, are twenty seven teachers who are signed up to go to Understanding Native Minnesota Training up in Shakopee. You want to say any? You went to it already, didn't you? Yeah.
And it provides teachers and instructional leaders with the outline of all the relevant materials to bring to their classrooms. It's hands on, that meets their standards, and it was very powerful curriculum.
And what's amazing is that, you know, we had a set of teachers go last week and we have another set going in March. And immediately, I received emails from people at the sessions sending resources to share out with the rest of staff. So we did that last night. But it's pretty powerful training, all of these combined. And again, I really credit Sybil for for really connecting us to a lot of opportunities for our staff. So that is just a little more detail of what we just just spoke about. We did, we did cap our Understand Native Minnesota because because of sub sub demand and sub cost. So we do have a waiting list, but they actually have have filled up every seat as well. So we capped it, but they capped it. So there's heavy demand for for those sessions. And then we wanted to share just with you some of the reflections themes that came out of the hundreds of reflection forums that were submitted. We did use ChatGPT to actually run the reflections through to see some central themes. I'm not going to read these to you, but but we feel like, and I want to give a shout out to our staff, are really thinking about the training that they receive and and really reflecting on it when they submit submit these forms after each session. And then there is an added slide, not this one, but I you have this in your packet. But really, some some powerful thoughts and takeaways from our from our teaching staff that went through this. Again, we would love to share all two hundred seventy nine with you, but we will not do that. So we just captured some highlights. And then when Sybil and I were meeting last week, this is the new slide. I think Sybil thought it was important that we we also include like, hey, what is next? What do you plan to do with this new learning? And so again, we we looked through the reflections, we pulled out some powerful thoughts that we thought represented some good movement forward for our staff. So you can see those there. But again, really good training and really good information to carry directly into our classrooms. Anything you want to add to that?
No.
All right. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sybil.
Hello. It's a pleasure to be here. So we have a grant through American Indian Education and the program's mission is to preserve respect and honor the traditional values and spiritual beliefs of our American Indian and Indigenous communities. And the students across the district will receive quality education that affirms their cultural identities. And the guidelines that the program is eligible for the students and families. And it's for any enrolled tribal member, band, or Alaska Native or a child of a parent or grandparent of a member or tribe or Alaska Native. And when I was doing the outreach calls for the families and explaining the program, we identified there is about sixteen tribes of our Indigenous families that's represented in our community. That's been spans from the East Coast, West Coast, Southwest. But the majority of our families belong to about six Minnesota tribes, other Jibways, Chippewa, and Dakota. When doing the outreach calls to the families of explaining the program, talked about what, how can the school district best support you and your child? And they are really wanting connection to other Native families. Cultural cultural enrichment activities, access to their own language resources, and really emphasizing how to enhance their own child self esteem and post secondary supports and career readiness. So after listening to the feedback of the families and the youth, we have some upcoming field trips planned. And our first one is coming up where we're going to be taking some of the middle schoolers and high schools to the Sioux Minnewakan Tribe, the Cultural Center in Maine. And then also connect them to some powwows and partnership with another existing AIPC A activity in April as well. And the program also provides attendance supports and linkage to community resources. And the goal of the grant is to really increase the daily attendance. Because with daily attendance, it helps achieve the academic success and increase the proficiency rates of the MCAs. And also as well, the self esteem and providing the cultural resources and the enrichment activities. And is there any questions?
Wonderful. Great for their great job on the report. We appreciate the information. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for either Sybil or?
Thank you, Sybil and Hope for that presentation. Very informative. Just a question on the grant. So what's the grant period? Is that an ongoing kind of annual grant? And then as far as the goals, is like, how are we tracking those? And sort of how are we doing on them so far, if it's the right time to ask?
I want to take that much. So we would, we apply for that funding annually. We actually applied in the fall, late fall. We still have not actually heard back from MDE. I think there's a timing issue, but so what Sybil and I did is is look at what the needs were in a variety of spaces in our district, both academic and socio emotional. And then you write both the goals and and how you will track track those goals. And then we will file a report back to MDE.
And just to add, it's it's called a grant program, but it is and it isn't. It's a certain amount of money that is generated per student, depending on the size of your district or there's a minimum amount of money that you can get. You need to complete the grant application to ensure that you're going to use the funding in alignment with what the state statute says. So you create the plan. It's supposed to make sure that it aligns with what the processes and protocols are. Then the department will approve your plan. And so we did say we would move forward with some of the expenditures, anticipating that we would be approved because we have been in other years as well.
Any other questions or comments? Corey?
Just like to say thank you, Sybil and Hope for being here. Really appreciate the presentation. I'm really hopeful to see the results and see how the progress happens. I expect a lot of good things. Looking through the report, I got to say some of the reflection quotes are pretty impactful to read from the staff. So I'm glad personal development went well a couple of weeks ago. And I know Dr. Hillman shared an update about some of the presenters and the energy, as you said, Hope. So it was good to see that was a good event for all and hopefully folks left with some things to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? It's really nice to see you, Sybil. Just I know that you do stellar work. I work with Sybil in another organization and always been impressed by your work and dedication. I had one quick question for you. Well, I guess two, you used an acronym AIPC. Did I hear that right? Can you remind me what that means?
The American Indian Indian Parent Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, uh huh, okay. And then do you use the word services and supports interchangeably? Okay, great. Thank you. That clears it up. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right, we will move on to our next item, which is the potential 2024 Northfield High School Bond referendum update. And Superintendent Hillman will review what has occurred thus far regarding the potential 2024 bond referendum and address facility problems at the high school. So I will turn that over to you.
Yes. So I'm going to just frame a little bit of the conversation as I've said this many times before. We are in a situation where people come to this conversation at different times. So I think it's really important to ground us and where have we been? I will do this as efficiently as I possibly can while still remaining my normal thorough self. We have been obviously discussing this dilemma for some time. We really started this round of conversation back in October. So we've been at this for about five months now in terms of discussing and engaging the community. That's something we've done differently. This time, we've created a much longer runway before asking you to make any kind of decision about what to put on the ballot, if anything. Getting as much engagement ahead of that decision, more so than other times when we've discussed this topic in the past. So, you know, we started this in October. You know that we've held several work sessions. Work sessions are intended to be able to have board members really dig into one topic or focus on one particular area. We hosted four tours of the high school. They progressively were attended, more people attended, the closer we got to the end. We did offer a tour of the new Owatonna High School, not because we think that that is something necessarily that is needed here, but we wanted people in our community to be able to see what does 2023 high school construction look like. We held a public meeting in which people were invited to come and you know how that process went. The process was a presentation about twenty minutes. People had a chance to go into breakout rooms with board members and administrators. They had a chance to share their feedback, their advice, their questions for you. They came back into the auditorium, had a public comment style opportunity to share with those in attendance, their perspectives and feelings. We had sixteen people take advantage of that. You had a chance to reflect. We've been talking about this at every board meeting. We've intentionally metered out for you information. So thinking about what were the costs of the potential ways to solve the twenty one or so problems that the board had coalesced around things that were worth solving at the high school? Then looking at what would the tax impact of those potential solutions be? Now hearing the survey data to try to create that alignment between what we've heard anecdotally from the community, what you've seen in the data, the experiences that you've had by touring the high school, talking with staff members, hearing from our professional staff, hearing from our architect and former construction management partners. Now you have a set of scientific survey data that will give you a very good insight into how the community is feeling about it, what they would support, what they wouldn't support. So our goal all along has been able to give you as much data as we could so that you would be prepared to decide whether or not you'd like to move forward with any kind of project to address those high school issues. And if so, what pathway would you like to move forward? We are coming down to the end of the timeline on the screen. I've got the timeline. We are coming down to the end of the timeline from the next real touch point, if you will, which we have another work session that is next Tuesday, March fifth. That's an earlier work session, just to remind people, it's from four to technically five fifty nine PM. That is primary day, so we are not allowed to have meetings between six and eight. Just to be clear, that will be held in this room. The other work sessions had been been held in the high school, but we're not able to use the high school at that time for this meeting. So we'll be here, just so people are aware of that. So wanted just to review the timeline. Then the other piece that I want to review is I did provide an updated just summary, if you will. And so what I've done here is provide you a number of different pieces. One, I have tried to outline a number of different options that you have been looking at. Option one really looked at maintenance and renovation. And you have four different options to look at there, including one A, which is really that substantial maintenance and modest renovation of the existing facility. An option one A alternate, which looks at solely at HVAC, lighting, plumbing, and windows. When you do that, you're required to address some ADA issues, and so that is included as well. That number could also be slightly less than the thirty six point one million because we did just get an updated piece of data around what in what things in the existing locker rooms are ADA required. And that's included in the detail that I provided in the table file this evening. I wasn't able to update this particular grid in time. One, option one B basically adds the potential of some turf along with that more substantial update to the existing facility. One C would then also add a field house, just showing you how those things add up. You'll notice that I put under every one of those option one grid items, the additional two and a half million dollars that is estimated to expand the existing windows. So that's not just about replacing the existing windows. It's about expanding them to allow more natural light into those existing spaces. Option two, which has been dubbed the reimagine option. Again, that would include a significant multi story addition. It would include demolition of the oldest and some of the least efficient parts of the facility, renovating the remaining parts of the existing building that would remain. It would include some turf practice fields for athletic practices and FIED classes, as well as an athletic field house with room for four basketball courts. That estimated is around seven, one hundred and seventeen point six million. Option three and four are around a brand new school, one on campus, one off campus. I think that a cursory review of the data that we got from the survey tonight really just shows that there's not even close enough to support from a financial perspective of those surveyed to where those would be options, you know, potentially on the table. So just I want to point that out, call that out, and I think that that's important. I think we did a good job of analyzing that, but we also have to look and be realistic with the data. But those are what the costs would be for those two different options. I also have added a line of what we anticipate geothermal. We've talked about the potential of a geothermal system. This could be added to any of the options. And the concept again with geothermal would be that more costly upfront investment, but a longer term return on lower utility costs. And also, you know, working on our environmental impact to our strategic commitment of stewardship. That's estimated between five and seven million. Then I also, just for your purposes, pulled out the field house. So I took the field house and gave it to you just as a single line so that you would be able to see it on its own, so that you know what that would cost. Now, we've got it at eighteen point eight million. It would likely be a more expensive option in with any of the option one choices because we would then be required to make that into a storm shelter. That could be done in a couple of other ways in in options two, three, and four. So I just point out that field house option, should we partner it with an option one, would be more expensive because we would be required to have some of, at least some of that facility be strong enough to withstand an F four tornado, as you've heard Sal Bagley from Old Architects talk about that before. So just trying to give you the lay of the land there. Then on the second page of that update, it is now time to start thinking about if you were to choose to move forward with anything on the November twenty twenty four ballot, we would need to start thinking about what kind of term would you use in the bond? And when we talk about a bond term, it's like your mortgage. We're thinking about what would the length of the mortgage be? You are seeing, as you, if you remember talking with Jeff Seeley from Ellers at the last meeting, bonds typically in Minnesota range twenty to thirty years. You're seeing more and more bond terms of thirty years, Mr. Seeley shared with us at the last meeting. And I think it's really important for folks to think conceptually about the length of bond term. So one, the shorter the bond term in that twenty to thirty year range, the more the annual cost to the taxpayer. But the collective tax base pays less in the long term. You're paying it off sooner, there's less paid in the long term, you're paying less interest. The longer the bond term, the lower the cost on an annual basis to the taxpayer. So it hits my pocketbook a little bit less each year. But when we look back over the total term over thirty years, the collective tax base pays more because we're paying interest for a longer period of time. So I know many people in the community understand that concept. If you go to purchase a car, if you have a longer term, you're typically going to pay more back with interest. If you have a shorter term, it's going to hit your pocketbook more on a monthly basis, but you're going to pay less in the long run. So we know that people Uh, people who are in our community understand that concept um regularly. The other thing that you would start to begin thinking about at this point is. The structure, again, if if we were to move forward with anything in November, what are the structure of any potential ballot questions? So there's really just a couple of different approaches. Um, you can use a single question. That encompasses everything that you're asking for. So basically. For all of the projects that you'd be asking the community to support, it's either up or it's down. One question, very straightforward. Um, you can get into multiple referendum questions. This approach has its advantages and disadvantages too. The advantage of. A standalone, single question is that very straightforward. You're talking about one thing, it's all in or all out, one or the other. Um, but if a person objects or thinks about one part of a project differently, they may. Change their vote, right, based upon that one part of an overall package. If you were to do multiple referendum questions, again, each question could stand alone, so they could be independent. You had, if you have, let's say you had three questions, each of those questions could be voted up or down on their own merits. Uh, another uh very uh sensible approach is contingent questions. So you place question two contingent on question one passing. And then if you did a third question, just in the example, you could say that we would question three would only be evaluated if question two passed. So what this does is if question one doesn't pass, nothing else gets evaluated. If question one passes and question two fails, question one still passes, but question two and three then would fail. Let's say that you had the unusual circumstance, which one district did have this year where a can uh the primary question passed. But the contingent question, or excuse me, the primary question failed, but the contingent question passed. You get neither, right? So it's it's in that way of you have to be successful one with one in order to evaluate the next. So contingent questions are a a a possible way for you to think about breaking the projects apart. So that you'd be able to give differing levels. Tax impact, Ellers did present this tax impact at the last meeting. I won't go into that. Uh, you have seen that and the tables are linked. And then, of course, I've already talked about our next steps, March fifth, the work session from four to technically five fifty-nine, right here in the District Office Boardroom, and then. Finally, on March eleventh, uh, at the regular meeting here, uh, we are going to ask you to give us some direction as to what pathway you would like to go forward. Now, when you give us what pathway to go forward, that would uh. Kick off the next step, so we would start to work on something that's called the review and comment, that's something that's required for the state. We start working with a bond attorney. Again, if you were to choose to put anything on the ballot in November, we don't write the questions. There's a technical and legal way that those questions would have to be written. A bond attorney would write those questions for us. Of course, you you then approve those, and so there's a sequence of things that we need to take place. Now. We are further ahead, obviously, with the November election, when typically schools wouldn't even make this decision till August. But we have new conditions. Um, early voting starts two weeks after school begins in the fall. We also have a change in law about a, an earlier notification for the review and comment. That. Requires us to think a little bit differently, accelerate uh that process. So we have done what we have been able to do as your professional staff. To give you the information, to engage the community to the best of our ability to have them give us their advice and questions and thoughts upfront. We're now really in that crunch time where we hope we've given you. Um, enough information where you would be able to make an informed decision moving forward. We can still get you additional information. Should that be something that you're interested in, but we're really hoping that tonight is a kickoff conversation. That would lead to some kind of decision, uh, and whatever it is, we, your team will execute, we will execute whatever you decide. Uh, but it's it's getting time for us to decide what we're going to do, if anything, in November of twenty twenty-two. So. In the packet, I also included some other previous things that people had seen previously. So we're trying to include things in the packet that you may have seen before, but we don't want to have the people to look into different packets, so. I guess I was thorough. Sorry.
You need to apologize for being thorough? Um, okay, good. Thank you for that. Uh, board members, I will now facilitate a discussion on all things high school dilemma. Um, you had Dr. Lifto, or we did um present on the survey just now. Dr. Hillman just provided a very thorough recap of our process. Um, we also have Shelby McQuay from Ellers.
Shelby on the line? There she is.
Hi, I'm here.
Available to assist with any other questions. Um, I do have some um direction for us before we start our discussion, so bear with me while I read some of my um scripted comments. And this is the time for you to share your thoughts up to this point, um, to ask any question or get further clarifications. Tonight, your comments should be statement driven and our public work session on March fifth will be more discussion oriented. Some of you have all the information you need to speak about where you're leaning, while others of us um need further time to process, and both of those are appropriate. Tonight. My hope is that those of you who are ready to move on to solutions will begin sharing those thoughts tonight. Um, this is a dynamic topic. We've received substantial feedback from um in the last five months, and we'll receive more from the public as we move ahead. Um, and because our board is committed to the highest standards of public discourse, I want to take this opportunity. To remind us about our policy two oh nine code of ethics. This policy guides our work as board members, and while we are expected to follow these eh um ethics at all times, I want to highlight. A few points from the policy just to ground our um school facility discussion tonight. This is from policy two oh nine, letter C, numbers one, three, four and five. C, to maintain relations with other members of the school board, I will, one, respect the rights of others to have and express opinions. Number three, make no disparaging remarks in or out of board meetings about other members of the board or their opinions. Four, keep an open mind about how I will vote on any proposition until the board has met and fully discussed the issue. Five, make decisions by voting in board meetings after all sides of debatable questions have been presented. I'll ask you to please wait to um for me to call on you, be mindful that others want to speak also. Um, I'll check on everyone um to share before calling on um you a second time around. Again, this is the time um to share and not debate each other. If you'd like to hear more on anything that a fellow uh board member has asked. Or shared, um, please ask during your time, and then on the following round of comments. Um, board members can choose to offer further details on their initial comments. I would like to begin by sharing uh my reflections and where I'm um. Looking at, um, I've considered the input, uh, as I've considered the input at this point. The community forum was really helpful connecting informally on the tours with um community members. Um, participating in a number of those tours. The detailed itemized needs at the high school have been very helpful. Um, and for me also, the survey was was key. Um, I'm comfortable sharing tonight that I'm looking hard at a version of the reimagine or option two. Uh, new academic edition, which would address many of the academic security and mental health concerns in the existing building. Um, based on what we learned from the survey, there's support for this work, but the funding portion would have us consider removing. Um, some items to bring the cost down. For me, the reimagine option is a great compromise between the um optimal solution and the funding support. Um, if anybody else wants to offer statements at this point, I'll begin calling on you.
Thank you, and I guess I'd like to begin just by thanking the board and the district and officer. The folks that we're working with at Ellers and Wold. I mean, I think we've really been engaged, you know, in a thoughtful process, really starting with. What is the problem we're trying to solve and get a kind of wrap our arms around some of the things that were. Remain and are challenges with the with the current high school, so. Thank you, fellow board members for being so engaged in that process. I know many of you went on multiple tours of the high school and some. Some of us made it down to see what a new high school looks like to our neighbors in the south, but. This has been a very informative process for me, and you know, I think it's Matt, you've said. People are coming to this conversation in different places. And yet, I think as we look at some of those survey results, it was heartening to see that. We didn't see a lot of distribution between some of those demographic groups, you know, so I think we have, as Dr. Lifto was reflecting. Done, and I think a good job of at least initially educating the community about the challenges and the the problems we're trying to solve. It relates to the high school. Some of the things that stood out to me just in the survey was, you know, the level of support identified. Around some of those safety and security issues and also just looking at. The classroom spaces uh around special education and accessibility. That's a big. Piece that I think stood out to a lot of the survey respondents and and things that we certainly saw when we're walking through the physical space. Think again, and I've reflected on this as the previous board meetings, but. Having the opportunity to see a newer space, a space that was designed, you know, for the twenty-first century. We do start to appreciate kind of how more flexible classroom spaces can be used and imagined and how we can, you know, kind of. Build a space that fits the the educational needs and styles of. A learner in twenty twenty-four and, you know, hopefully they're for the next generation. Versus kind of what we thought about as a traditional classroom in the nineteen sixties. Those things have changed. The way we use technology has changed and, you know, the physical environment that we. Know is good for kids to learn in has changed over that time period as well, so I think that's, that was very informative and helpful for me. I think one of the questions that really stood out to me when we had the public session at the high school was a question. Around, you know, why now? Sort of what's what's, why do we need to sort of solve this problem now? And I think. Part of it is when we look at, when we last visited this question in twenty twenty seven or twenty seventeen and looked at the cost of a new high school, I think we were at. About eighty million dollars and. When we look at the cost of a new high school under option three or four, you know, we're about a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy, maybe a hundred and eighty million, so. In that time period, that cost has increased over a hundred percent to build a new high school, to the point where I think it's realistic to say that. Given the tax base of this community, it's no longer an option to consider a new high school. I think that option is off the table, just from a. Taxable and kind of affordability standpoint. We have heard from the community where they fall in terms of what they feel like it's feasible, looking at the survey results, and I think that. Leaves us with the reimagine option that accomplishes many of the things that were identified as priorities in the survey. Gets us a reimagine space where we can address things like access, controlled access, the number of access points that might be in the building, address things like. Accessibility and modernize those learning spaces, which I think is crucially important. And I think my concern is if we don't look at that option two, that reimagine option. We're not addressing some of those things that were identified by the community, and I think by many of those. Many of us on the board walking through the facility is as priorities. And my concern is, is that, you know, if we wait another five, six, seven years, we end up in a place where. Even the reimagine option is no longer affordable. As much as the community might want to do it. It's no longer financially feasible, given the tax base that we have here in Northfield, so. My concern is if we wait, we no longer have a choice, and we're essentially. Left with the building that we have for not even the foreseeable future, but, you know, far into the future. And I think one of the most compelling comments that I heard at uh. The public session at the high school several weeks ago was actually in reference to this building, um. Somebody that had come to this building, I think, in the late nineteen forties after it was built, you know, and he said. I had the opportunity to come to a new school. And appreciate what it meant to be in a new school because those before me stood up and recognized. That that was needed, and I think that's the point for me where we are right now, and the need to really reimagine that high school space, and I think. We, during our work session next week, we can kind of dig into the particulars in terms of, you know. Which elements of those we should prioritize in terms of and how we put those things on the ballot, but. I'm solidly in the place where I feel like now is the time where we need to act, and yeah, I think the community is reflecting that that as well, so thank you.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Anybody else want to make a comment, reflection or have a question?
First off, I'd like to recognize the process as well, as Ben said, having gone through this for a year roughly throughout. The entirety of twenty twenty-two, I really appreciate the process, this time, the thoroughness and the the roadmap that was ahead of us. I felt that, as Claudia and Ben both said. There were multiple points of input input from stakeholders across the board, from staff, students. Uh, community members, taxpayers, and certainly the board itself as we navigate that space, and for some of us, probably the first time in a long time. So it was good to get in there for the tours and experience that space. Um, so first off, I thought the process has been great and, you know, hopefully we'll see it through for another two weeks and. Um, continue a good process. Dr. Hillman, I did have one question concerning your update in the table file today for the one. Alternate one option where you've mentioned that um the five point eight million dollars for locker rooms could be lowered to. One point two four million dollars. Would that be reflective across all plans? If in consideration of locker room space?
That is specific to option one, but yes, in any of the option one items, if you were to reduce just to the ADA concerns. In the locker room, that's what it would cost just to bring it to the minimum ADA component.
Okay, thank you.
But again, focus on option one.
Okay, just wanted to see if that was across the border map. Uh, so having gone through this process and and Claudia, I had mentioned, someone was to probably further along and. Uh, as we recently learned, phase three training, I I kind of make my decisions move forward, but I'm open to discussion still, but. I am ready also tonight to kind of put my voice out there for what I'm considering an option, and I think both of you have said it very well tonight. Um, I am in supportive of some variation of a reimagine, the option two. I echo all the comments both Ben and Claudia have made in terms of the need and the time and the why now. Um, we've heard long clear from folks, um, a- and certainly the results of the survey were heartening this time by. But that's only one piece of the puzzle that does not guarantee anything, of course, so. It certainly uh will take a lot of work and effort for whatever decision we make forward for a solid education plan moving forward to. Educate the community about the need at the school. So for now, I will just say that, as Ben alluded to, next week, we can probably hash out some of the details. Um, I think based on. The financial responses from folks, a thirty-year bond would probably be likely, but. Uh, that's where I'm favored right now, but again, that's part of figuring out what we are going for and how much that might be, and then that obviously can determine the length of a bond and. Those items, but uh as far as tonight's conversation goes, I will say I'm solidly in that option two.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Anybody have questions, comments, or, okay, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. I just kind of have a reflection and then some questions possibly for Dr. Hillman. Um, on some of the um new information that we received. I I think that we're in a. More of a unique position here than the other districts that I've kind of studied that have either recently completed. New construction or renovations or are considering it um for two um main reasons. One, I think. As Ben said many, many times in this process here, that our high school um design. Um, is just very different and not at all practical um for our state. And that, so that that's been tough as compared to a lot of other districts that have buildings that are. Uh, maybe have more of a modern design, even though they may be very old buildings. That modern design is really um what has saved them and will probably help them through um making decisions like this a lot easier. Um, and the cost too, probably be a lot less for improvements and repairs, so. Um, that's one factor I think that is just making this more difficult for all of us and puts us in more. Of a unique position, and also um the second factor being um our tax base. I. Have compared other other districts and our our city tax rate is. The the burden weighs heavy on residential, on homeowners compared to other districts. Even Owatonna, we are much higher than. Owatonna, our our homeowners are bearing a lot more. And I think that that instills a little bit of fear in our in our taxpayers here, and. So that's that's another really difficult factor that we all have um and that we should consider. I do have some questions though, after receiving some some of the newer information for this week. Um, I think Dr. Hillman can probably. Answer those. So. When it, going through the survey, um, it kind of, it was, I also agree that it was a little disheartening, but. Not not a, not too much surprising, I guess. One of the surprising um things I noticed was the uh number one. Um, highest hi- increased support would be the safety and security. Dr. Hillman, could you just kind of go through a little bit what areas um within that safety and security? Line that you would see the greatest need for an update there at the high school? Because I I I thought that we had. Um, recently upgraded the the doors, the entry system and that type of thing.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Justin Roble, our District Buildings and Grounds Coordinator, to come to the podium as well to help support. I think there, the biggest concern that we have as leaders. I think they're the biggest concern that we have as leaders and that we hear from people in the community are the inordinate number of exits. And I've shared very transparently in the past with many people that those 37 plus exits are wonderful if we're trying to evacuate the facility, right? It gets everybody out of the facility very quickly. That's a strength of it. But sadly, in our environment that we live in today, that also means those are entrances for people to come in. And I'm going to have Justin talk a little bit about some of the door monitoring pieces that we have implemented. It's not ubiquitous across, you know, all of the doors, but even with an alarm, even, even with that kind of alarm, when you still have as many entrances and I that is the, I, to me is the piece that is the biggest component that we have with safety and security at the high school is the fact that we have so many places where people could get in or out. Let's think about the middle school, for example, or the New Greenville Park facility. Both facilities were built in the last 20 years. You see multi-story facilities that still have quick exit when you're required by fire code. Justin also happens to be Northfield Fire Department Deputy Chief. You can still get people out fairly quickly, but we also have reduced the number of entrances, right? Exits and entrances. And while buildings are, or those doors are locked, we have some electronic controls, but not through all of the doors at the high school. So I think the greatest concern about security is related to the number of entry and exit points. Justin, would you just talk a little bit about how the, the modest door hardware works?
Yep. So the, the main doors that are set up for entrances do have card access and we can, we can control through our card access system who has access to those doors. But if you look at just what the high school is as a footprint versus like the middle school, which would be a comparable sized building, there's twice as many doors, for instance. And once those doors are there, there's nothing, there's no way to monitor if a door is propped open. There's no way to monitor if somebody else lets somebody in those doors. There's no way, we cannot stop people from leaving those doors, which is another issue that just for attendance and accountability for students. You know, and it is as Dr. Hillman said, when you start stacking buildings and having fire corridors, it's a lot easier to manage and control who goes and what it looks like from a security standpoint.
And I do think the, the other piece I would say is I, I think that it's fair to say that because of the very public challenges to student safety across the country, right? I think that also plays a role in this, right? I, I think there are probably people who rated this pretty high, who maybe don't even know we have that many exits. But when you are seeing the news across the country about some, you know, things that are happening at schools, I think this is all, that is also a reason that at the end of the day, people want our children to be safe. And they see too many examples of where they are not. And so it, it stands to reason to me that the really substantial support for that statement comes from two pieces. One, just the general interest in the overall welfare of our students. And number two, for those people who do know the facility, just that challenge of the exit entrance dilemma.
So then that previous security update to doors was, was mainly interior doors?
No, it, it is exterior doors. And it would be like your main points of entrance is what we monitor and control. It's the other 30-ish doors that they're locked, but they're still there and they're marked as fire exits. And it's part of what it takes for emergency egress with the, with the floor plan, which what the high school is.
Okay. And then I kind of have a related question then, because the next highest support item, I guess, was the updated special education classrooms, which I thought kind of tied into the accessibility, but can you explain the difference between those and what are special education classrooms, the kind of updates that you feel that we would need there versus the accessibility, which would be the exterior?
Yeah. So I think there's a couple of things. I think that if you think about the bulk of the, that facility being built prior to IDEA or the, you know, the national law requiring special services, the bulk of the building being built before that. And then some of the classrooms, quite a few of the special education classrooms are ones that were built in some of the newer segments of the building that were post IDEA or special education, the special education law. Some of it is accessibility, right? So some of it is a combination of accessibility within the classroom. So special education classrooms tend to be smaller than larger, than a traditional classroom. I think that's fair to say. Would you agree, Justin?
Yes, it is.
And they also have tended to be a little bit more, I'm thinking of the special education spaces that we currently have at Northfield High School. And there's a variety of spaces, but they tend to be smaller. And then they also tend to be a little bit more broken up. We did address one issue for just by way of example of updating a classroom several years ago, when we removed the rock house. Remember the rock house was at the corner of Division and Jefferson. When the roundabout went in, we, we took, we actually sold that house and someone came and took it away. We reformatted a traditional, actually a larger sized classroom in the high school, so it can function as an apartment. Right? So it's got the cooking kinds of skills. It's got those other homeowners. So that's the kind of thing where we were not able to do that in those other traditional special education spaces. We ended up needing to use a classroom, put a bathroom, all those kinds of things as part of it, to be able to get it up to speed for what is expected for today. So I would say it's both partially an accessibility and then also the manner in which we're looking at delivering special education instruction. I think the accessibility portion is tied into that, but it is also about some of the challenges of getting in and around the facility. So for example, if I am looking to watch a basketball game and I am coming in, I'm going to have to take that elevator up one, right? I'm going to have to go across the upper, that dance studio, if you will, that's behind the bleachers to get over to the other side to be able to get, or I could go down. And I could use that elevator to go down one level and come in on the floor level of the gym. So that's the way a lot of people experience it. I think also we've talked with people about the ability to get to the weight room, right? That you have to go outside the building to get to the weight room. So there are many parts of the building that are accessible, but there are also some of those key parts that are not.
Okay. And then I have a couple of questions on the information that you gave us recently. When is the, the, the option one a alternate? Do we have tax impact information?
We do not yet have tax impact information for a 36 or 31 million dollar. We have not asked that yet. It would be lower, obviously, than what the lowest one that we provided. But we can certainly ask elders to provide us that. And we can probably, Shelby, I'm thinking we could get tax impact for that by, I would say, we could be able to get that before next Tuesday.
Sure, we can do that.
And then would that be based on the 20 and 30-year terms? Or, or would that be, would, would we have an option? Or have you noticed other districts going to an even lower option when that is kind of the price point?
Great question. I'll let Shelby answer that. So Shelby, did you hear the question?
Yes. Yep. I would say we would lean more towards the lower end for a couple of reasons. One, just the overall amount of projects that you have compared to what you're planning to do at 36 million, you would probably then foresee other projects in the future. And then also just in structuring the bond, when you get smaller, the investors like to see larger block sizes. So more amount each year. So there is, there is preference to getting a better interest rate when you can make the size of each year bigger.
And Shelby?
Yeah.
Have you seen districts do less than a 20-year bond?
Yep. Yeah, the 20-year sort of comes into play because the Department of Education has said, or actually the statute says that in order to qualify for debt service equalization aid, you have to have a 20-year bond. So you know, should the, you, you currently are, don't qualify for debt service equalization aid, but if the formula ever became more beneficial, we'd probably want to set, you know, look to set you up or, or not, right? Just get it done and not look to future possible state aid, but just minimize the interest over the period of time.
And then I have one last question about option two, the reimagine. So in order to fall in line with, with our survey results, we would have to shave off a large amount there. And could you kind of walk us through the process that we as a board would use to, to, to get to that point?
Yes. So I, I think there's a couple of things within that question. I think right now we're seeing that informed support for the amount as of today. And so it is not uncommon to see an increase in support during an educational campaign with the community. As more people come to the table, learn about what we're proposing, it is not uncommon to see a higher support rate for something at the polls than what you saw in the survey. A couple of ways that you could consider doing them. I'm going to start this way. I'll come back to what you asked at the end. This is an example of where breaking a bond referendum into multiple questions is a way to get at that. So for, by way of example, uh, the board could suggest a a bond reform of the full amount of the academic addition, demolition, the associated parts with the main academic portion of the building as question one. It could add question two as the fieldhouse, for example, right? So that it would potentially go above what the initial support is. But you would be looking at saying, we're going to look at this amount in question one, and then question two being contingent on question one. You could potentially go beyond what the initial support shows. That's a, something we have seen in a number of districts. So that's one way. Another way that you could work on thinking about how to reduce the cost of the bond would be through a process that we would call braiding. So we would use Justin, we would use Val, we'd look out to what we think would be the build year. So let's say that we hypothesize that the, if the, if a bond reform were passed and we're anticipating a build in, say, 2026, I'm just using that as an example, it might even be a year later. What we would look at doing is structuring some existing funding that we already have. You've heard the long-term facilities maintenance and the capital budget at the last meeting. We're going to ask you to approve that tonight. We could be thoughtful and forecast that in that one year, we would forego doing updates at other facilities. And we would use the long-term facilities maintenance and the capital funding that year to target specific pieces of that reimagine option. By way of example, you could use long-term facilities maintenance to renovate the agricultural, industrial tech, art, existing cafeterias, auditorium, anything that is existing that is going to maintain the same function after the upgrade as before, you could use, you could say that year, we're going to use all of our long-term facilities maintenance revenue as part of braiding those funds with any bond referendum proceeds we get. You could do the same thing with capital. There are some other tools you could use. You can use an abatement bond to do things for parking lots. I don't recommend that. The reason Val and I would not recommend that is that that is a tax increase that you could levy on your own. But we wouldn't want to do that because we wouldn't want to show, to have the public think that we are going to do a vote and then you vote another tax increase, if you will. So that is a tool. Transparently, I don't think it would be wise in this circumstance because it would necessitate another tax increase for taxpayers. I'd probably just put it all on the question so that it's transparent. The LTFM and the capital would be one way that you'd be able to lower that initial bond cost. Then you would start to look at, I, what I would recommend that you do is look at the priorities that you have identified. Are there things that, talking with Sal from Ould, that we can reduce and still get the minimum level of investment or change that we've been looking for? And that's where I think the board would then, from a policy perspective, would say, here's how we want you to prioritize these projects to a particular number. So there's a number of different ways I, I would invite you to consider with all of the discussion that you had around those 21 questions, I would encourage you to potentially think about what you heard in the survey results, what you've heard from staff and students. And then that's where you have some hard decisions to make about what areas that you would focus on versus others. So there's a, a number of ways to get to do that in terms of, you know, how large is the new addition? Are there other amenities in the new addition other than just classrooms? There's a number of different ways that we can look at that. And that doesn't necessarily have to be before margin. If we go forward with the reimagine option, but you say we need to have an option that comes forward that hits this number, that's where we would help work and make some recommendations about how to structure that. And that way, either a combination of the braiding of funds, as I described, or some of the deletion of some of the things, or I don't like this term, but you will hit the value engineering. Do we look at maybe something a little bit different than what we had originally been discussing and thinking through? So those are just some of the ways. Is that helpful? Is that get at what you're asking?
Yes, I think that helps a lot to help me prepare for the, the work session.
So thank you. Great, great questions. Anyone else want to comment? Noel?
If the security of one of the doors at the high school is violated, would, well, I'm going to go off.
After hours when the building is armed, it will. But during, the building security system is not, does not alarm on if just the comings and goings of people. And it, no building in the district does. Yeah, for all kinds of different reasons, but there's some, some of the doors have, if like a, if it's a strictly fire exit, there is like a sounding panic. Yeah, sounding panic bar, but we do not get like a burglar alarm would be how that would be monitored.
So students could exit that way anytime.
They can.
That seems like a problem.
Is that all? Noel? Sorry, just a minute. Is that all? Noel? Do you have any other comments or questions or comments? Okay, great. All right, Jeff.
Turn your microphone on, please.
Yeah, a question on, if we already tried to get a bond today for 20, 25 or 30, what's the current bond rate? Five, five point, it's five something?
Yeah, we are assuming a 5% interest rate for a 20-year and then the yield curve is pretty flat right now. So just minor assumptions going up from there on a 25-year and 30-year.
Shelby, can I just ask clarification? I think on the tax impact statement that was most recently produced for us, we were anticipating a 4.75% rate on a 20-year, a five. It was a 475. I've got it right here.
Yep, that's correct. That's what we've.
So right now, what you're projecting, because again, you're projecting out to when you would bid it. 475 on a 20. Could you remind me? I'm just pulling it up right now.
Yeah, that, that is what we have. Sorry, I misspoke. So 4.75 on a 20, 5% on a 25 and 5.25% on a, on a 30.
Thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
And I, you know, I'd also add that that's, that's got some significant cushion in there for current market rates. So we, you know, when you're taking this out to the voters, you need to make sure that you're going to come in at or below that number. But there would be some strategies that we would, you know, look to as we, as we get a little closer, right? To possibly not all issuing it all at once. Maybe having the term of the financing be longer, but but having two issues split. We've done that with quite a few of the larger issues where you know, the first issue, because you're not going to be able to do $100 million of construction and in the first two summers, let's say we'll split it up and that that way you can sort of achieve that lower interest rate of a shorter term while having the entire financing be 25 to 30 years.
Does that help, Jeff? Do you have another question? Follow-up, Sam? Ben?
Couple on the, the question of kind of the bond rate. I think when we looked at the historical packet that you provided a couple of work sessions ago, you know, when we looked at the 25-year rate, we're at about average, I think. Is that right? The average over a 25-year period is right around 5% for Minnesota, for the bond rate. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's what we're seeing in the couponing is their 5% coupons. So over interest rate or TIC is lower.
Right. My question is, when we look historically over 25 years, that's about average.
Yes, for taxes of debt.
And I think when we bonded for the middle school, I want to say the rate was about 6%. Don't quote me, but I think it was, it was higher than, than we.
The 2019 one?
It would have been 2002? Retired that debt last year, Shelby.
Oh, sure. Okay. I can get that number while you're talking.
I just kind of had it. You know, Jenny raised a good point, you know, Northfield, you expert, that's all. And I think, you know, it's, it's a reflection of the. And I think, you know, it's, it's a reflection of the community just being personally. You know, excellent district for education. So it's a conscious choice that my wife and I made back in two thousand eight. So having had one, one student almost all the way through and one about, you know, two thirds of the way through, we've been very pleased so far. I had a chance, I was in Long Beach, California last weekend with somebody that used to live in Northfield and had to move to Iowa, but did not know that I was on the school board, but said, you know, gee, I really wish we could have stayed in Northfield because of the school. So I think that, you know, the community recognizes the value that the district provides. And I think when we look at the physical infrastructure, you know, I think it also recognizes the value that the space where the students do go to learn matters. And we have taken good care of the high school. But I do think it's, you know, as we look into the next thirty, forty, fifty years, we do want a space that's really reflective of the way that the community invests in and values the district and the education that the children receive here in, in Northfield. additional reflection. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna make further comments, questions? Okay, Jeff?
Uh, just as a kind of a ballpark, you know, for the three different price points we're really at was, you know, the one even on the option one at, you know, sixty million, sixty million, if you added five percent interest on that over twenty years is, is thirty-five million. So that comes up to ninety-five million. You're at the reimagine, if it's, you know, one twenty, one seventeen, that's another seventy. So you're at one ninety with interest. And the, kind of the new school option, if you just pick one eighty, I mean, you're at, you're at a hundred and five with the interest at five percent. So it's like, you know, two eighty-five. But what I, what I wanna try to get is the Owatonna deal, if I could. It's, um, if I'm, my numbers are right on Owatonna, which is an amazing school and I don't know how anyone could repeat that deal. But I, did they build that for one thirty?
Uh, the build price, to my understanding, Shelby, I understood it to be one twenty-two.
Okay.
So and the, the key part there is, as you know, there were some, a very large local nationally headquartered businesses that wrote some, so I, I think the cost to taxpayers in Owatonna, if I recall correctly, is around a hundred.
Yeah. I mean, I saw, I saw the number on there. So I'm thinking that Owatonna was one thirty and from the community they got like, which is really, in a sense, has nothing to do with us, but I'm kinda like, I don't wanna call it Owatonna, but I'm just picking this number because the people have seen that school and know that, that, you know, they got from the community, some other companies, let's say twenty-eight million. And maybe the school costs, you know, say at a hundred and thirty, but they're financing a hundred million dollars, which is an absolute amazing school. So really, our highest option would be, you know, basically, you know, do the Northfield version of that would probably still be around three hundred thousand and four, you know, three hundred million. But no, hopefully that's not, but whatever, uh, but yeah, I just, I look at that and I think that, boy, that was, you know, quite a deal. But you know what? Did you finance that or you, uh, did you work with Owatonna? Do you know what, what their bond rate is? Not that that matters, but I.
Yeah, they have a lower bond or they, yeah, they have a lower bond rating than you. I'm not seeing it. You have a pretty high bond rating. They issued though, in twenty twenty, in their average, their interest rate when they sold was two twenty-five. So.
What was the, what was the sell date on that? Cause I'm fairly certain that was right at the beginning of the pandemic.
Yep. Well, right before, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. And they assumed going into their vote, a four percent interest rate, twenty-five years. They did have, you know, they went into that with a fifty percent egg credit. I'm just looking at some numbers here. The authorization amount was one hundred and twelve million and I am not seeing in our documents that I, I didn't work with them personally, what the, what the total project was.
Yeah, that's so fine. Obviously, we couldn't repeat that. I'd like to, but I, you know, that's not realistic for here. So anyway, thank you.
Jeff? Anybody else have comment question or reflection second time around? I have a quick question on option one A of the alternate. In the description, Dr. Hillman says, and windows only, and then in the estimated cost, bring back to expand existing windows.
Yeah. So what we're talking about in the base of alternate or option one A alternate would be replacing the windows as is. So those skinnier panes of windows would be replaced as is. Adding the two and a half million dollars would allow you to expand, so you'd replace and expand the windows, if that makes sense.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna close this discussion. If no one else has a comment, reflection or question, then we will continue our discussion on March fifth up into the public from four to five, nine P M. Shelby for being here. Thank you, Justin. Right, we're gonna move on to item six, which is committee reports that we have any submitted. Okay. Board members serve on various committees in the district and they are asked to report back to the community in the form of a committee report once a year. So we'll look forward to the next opportunity. Item seven is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, by Jenny, second by Ben? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next item is items for individual action. I believe we have three items. Item A is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance budgets. I'll take a motion and then we can discuss, is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance budgets presented at our last meeting on February twelfth and outlined again in the memorandum of this meeting? Move by Corey, second. And by Ben, are there any comments or discussion on this item? Wanna make some comments now?
Just real quick, no changes in the budget amounts from what was presented, but we, part of the tenure plan does include the indoor air quality procedure document, which was included in the packet, but I failed to actually mention it when I presented it. So no major changes to that. Just wanted you to be aware that that's part of the process as well.
And I picked that up in item B. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next is our long-term facilities maintenance tenure plan. The board is requested to approve the long-term facilities maintenance, maintenance tenure plan and the indoor air quality management plan. Is there a motion to approve the plans as outlined and presented at our last meeting, February twelfth? Move by Noel. Okay, is there a second? Second by Corey. Is there any discussion, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. The next item is our policy recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the policy committee's recommendation to sunset policy three ten? Okay, move by Jenny, thank you. Is there a second? And by Ben, any comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Right, item nine, items for information. The week of February twenty-sixth through March first is Public Schools Week. Public Schools Week celebrated this year is a time for students, families, educators and community members to come together to show support for the country's public school system and public schools. Public schools provide a level playing field for all students, serving everyone equally regardless of socioeconomic status, background or ability. During Public Schools Week twenty twenty-four, take action and support our public schools. Item ten is our future meetings and work session, Tuesday, March fifth, four P M. In this boardroom, we will have a work session. March eleventh is a regular board meeting, also in this boardroom, six P M. Monday, March eighteenth, we have another board workshop in this boardroom at five P M. Yeah, item eleven is our adjournment. That's all the business that we have for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Noel, is there a second? And by Jeff, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.